Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 Pittsburgh City Commission Meeting to order. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move into public input, and I think I saw Pastor Mayo here.
If you don't mind, I'll kick us off with a prayer here. What do you think? Let us pray. Lord our God, as we begin this meeting, we ask your blessing. Please share your spirit of patience and care for others with us. May your love shield us from the dangers of the pandemic. We pray especially for the well-being of our healthcare professionals and the most vulnerable in our community, our children, our elderly, and those who find themselves in need. We also pray for those who are in public office, that they may make wise decisions which are always in the best interest of the common good. May your wisdom and peace be with us this evening. Amen. While I got the microphone, might as well update you on Project Warmth. You know, it's a little different this year, so we're it's gonna be a chilly feed without the chili, I guess you might say. You know, we're just gonna try and raise some funds virtually, because as you know, people will always need help with their utilities. So, in fact, November 15th is like Project Warmth Sunday, so different churches will be having a special collection for that, and you can always send a check to either me at the hospital or me for sponsors if you want to sponsor. But anyway, thank you.
Any other public input? All right, Darren, I think you have a special.
Yeah, if we can just take a minute. Our fire chief, Dennis Riley, started October 26th, was not able to be here at the first meeting, but if he wouldn't mind just coming up for a moment, introducing himself to the commission and the mayor, I'd appreciate it. Thanks, chief.
Good evening. I'd just like to say that it's a pleasure to be given the opportunity to lead your fire department. I've been very impressed with what I've seen in the city, both from the professional staff and my wife and I are very appreciative of the gracious welcoming we've received. I believe I'm at the point in my career where I'll be able to contribute to what I see as an outstanding organization, and I certainly look forward to my time serving the citizens and being a resident here in Pittsburgh. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome. All right, moving on into the consent agenda. Are there any things to be pulled off?
Item C.
Anything else? Being done, the consent agenda will include: A) Approval of October 27th, 2020 city commission meeting minutes; Item B) Approval of ordinance number G 31315 amending Section 38 through 78 through 31 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, and providing for the protection of public health, property, and safety and the regulation of traffic by adopting by the by adopting reference, by adopting by reference, the 2020 edition of the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas cities as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities, save and accept such parts or portions as supplemented, deleted, or changed, and repealing ordinance number G 1298 and authorize mayor to sign on behalf of the city. Item D) Approval of the application submitted by James Beckley Jr. to renew the Dance Hall License for Jimmy B.'s Faces LLC located at 202 North Locust and authorize the city clerk to issue the license. And item E) Approval of the appropriation ordinance for the period ending November 10th, 2020, subject to the release of HUD expenditures when funds are received. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Moved by Patrick, seconded by Chuck. Roll call vote?
Brooks?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
McNeigh?
Yes.
Muntzel?
Yes.
O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item C) Approval of ordinance number G 1316 amending Sections 54 through 41 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, regulating certain public offenses within the corporate limits of the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas, by adopting by reference the 2020 edition of the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities as published by the League of Kansas Municipalities, save and accept such parts or portions as supplemented, deleted, or changed, and repealing ordinance number G 1299 and authorize for the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
My question is concerning Section 2, criminal trespassing, and there's a couple city-owned properties that this would affect, Mount Olive and the pit. My question is, what is the what happens to somebody that's caught trespassing in these properties?
That may be a better question for a prosecutor. He has a discretion of how he would want to proceed with that. Normally, where specifically are you referring to, again?
Mount Olive and the, I guess they call it the pit, Escape Park, it's Slanger Park.
It's item D on page 12.
Okay. I have not spoken specifically with a prosecutor about that. I think our, would be in our best interest for me to get with John, municipal court prosecutor, and see exactly how that would impact what he anticipates would be a penalty or why that change was made specifically.
Have you caught anybody previously and what happened if there was somebody trespassing there?
Normally, like with the pit, it's located in City Park, and City Park's had a curfew time of 11:00 p.m. starting that. Regarding the actual cemetery, I'm not aware of anyone actually being there.
The reason I ask this, I just want to know if that would be the same, is there a difference between trespassing on city property compared to private residence? And the reason I asked that question was, I got a call from a citizen not that long ago that had somebody well beforehand, he had somebody break into his house when him and his wife were there. And recently, he had somebody sitting on his front porch. And I just wonder if the, if the trespass in the city-owned property compared to private residence.
The private residence would be the complainant on that. I know who you're talking about. That particular individual was cited for criminal trespass because he complained about it and the complaint was filed with municipal court.
All right.
So.
Thank you.
Commissioner, I think, you know, ordinarily, being on the grounds of Mount Olive or the pit in Slanger Park is not criminal trespassing. This just makes it a crime for anyone to be there in those hours that are listed. They would be charged with criminal trespass, just like anyone else. I think criminal trespass, my recollection is a Class C misdemeanor. And so, that's what the charge would actually be, if that helps.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that it's the same charge for a resident if they had the same situation that somebody is caught trespassing on their property. It's the same charge.
Yeah, typically criminal trespass would have the same penalty regardless of where it's at.
All right, thank you.
Two things. I would suggest that that's, that the reason we're establishing this is that, is so that if someone is there late at night, it gives the officers a reason to move them on and get them out of there where they don't do any vandalism or that kind of thing.
Sure.
I mean, that's what I, that's what I read it as affecting.
Correct.
Beyond, something else that I wanted to ask about was the standard traffic ordinance. I read through that. We don't have all of that stuff in our, in our laws already, our ordinances already?
These are adopted just to make it more standardized throughout the state. So, this is something that we have done for the past
Right.
How many years, decades?
I've been sitting here for a long time, and I remember that we keep going through these types of things.
We have individual rules on speed limits on roads. As you know, we love to come by here. This is just to make the state uniform, I think, for ease of prosecution, for especially a lot of smaller communities, and we just adopt it as a matter of course.
So, this is basically about traffic lights and what you can do with those. Okay, thank you.
If there's no further questions or discussion on item C, I move to approve.
My second.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Patrick. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on to special presentations. Regional Economy Update. Dr. Michael Davidson, Director of the Pittsburgh State University Business and Economic Research Center, will provide an update on the regional economy.
Mayor and commissioners, we're really glad to have Dr. Davidson here this evening. It's typical when you have a scholar in your midst, you give a little bit of their background. And Dr. Davidson came to this country as a Fulbright scholar, and does a BA in economics from Lewis and Clark in Portland, a master's in economics and business from University of Central Oklahoma, and PhD from Oklahoma State. He worked as the manager of economic research for the Tulsa Chamber for about 12 years, and he's currently a tenured professor of economics and the director of Business and Economics Research Center at PSU. He's performed a bunch of research on small, on the economics of small cities, and we're really lucky to have him here in our community. He currently publishes our quarterly Pittsburgh Microeconomic Report, which really gives a good picture of what the state of our economy is, and we look at, and Darren and I, we all, all of us look at it regularly to see how we're doing and to see where we may be able to help. This more recently, in October, he presented at the, on the local Pittsburgh economy at the Kansas Economic Outlook Conference that was held here. He's gonna talk to you a little bit about the state of our local economy, kind of give you some insights as to where we are. Particularly, you know, scary time for everybody nowadays with the economy, but I think Dr. Davidson has some really good insights as to what can be, what you can think of when you think of how strong and healthy Pittsburgh's economy is. I gave him a strict deadline of 15 minutes, so.
City Commission, thank you for the opportunity to speak here today about the local economy. I'm going to start out talking about local jobs, value-added output. Oh, I thought I had my pointer here. That's fine. Now, if we start the job growth, then you can see that number of jobs increased 1.6% in the metropolitan area in the 2015-2019 period. It declined 2.1% in Southeast Kansas and increased 1.9% statewide and 6.4% nationwide. Now, if you look at wages, then they've been growing at a very healthy rate, especially in the last three years or so. But during the period of 15, 2015 to 2019, they increased 12.1% in the metropolitan area, well above that of Southeast Kansas, and statewide of 11.6%, although it's less than the nationwide, 18.7%. Now, if you look at what's happening right now, then you can see during the first quarter, which is the latest information we have, the job growth was 3/10 of 1% locally, but wages are really taking off, increasing 5% in the metropolitan area, well above that of 3.3% in Kansas and 3.3% nationwide. Now, if you look at what type of jobs are growing, then you can see that all the jobs came from the goods-producing industries, mostly manufacturing, increasing an amazing 10.6%. They also had the highest monthly wages, and they had a phenomenal 7.1% increase in wages. Now, the local smoke stocks are really cranking out value, increasing the gross domestic product 16.8% during the 2015-2019 period, well above the rest of the nation. But there is a problem. 65% of the jobs in Pittsburgh, and Pittsburgh has most of the jobs in the metropolitan area, are filled by commuters according to the census. Now, in cooperation with the chamber, the Kels College of Business did a survey, and we found out that 71% of the local jobs in Pittsburgh at the major employers are filled by commuters. Now, Pittsburgh being the economic engine and the engine of economic growth in the region, so it's not surprising that people are commuting in for jobs, but this high level of commute is an economic development concern. Especially if you look at this, the higher the job pays or the higher the wages, the more likely it is that it's filled by commuters. Nationwide, 65% of sales of revenues of the average business goes to pay payroll. So, you can imagine the amount of wealth that is exported out of the city by the commuters. Now, we found out that 53.2% of the commuters wanted to live in Pittsburgh, but decided against it because of housing issues. So, we at Kels, we started, I mean, we did a survey, and we found out that there was something really wrong with the local housing markets. First of all, 55% of the housing stock was older than half a century old. Secondly, an increase in housing demand did not result in increase in housing supply, rather, it just increased prices. And at the time, only one to three homes were bashed every year in the area. So, I went on Realtor.com, and I found out that a home for 160,000 in Joplin, a new home and a good lot, you would, for the same amount, you would only get a home similar to this picture that looks dilapidated. Now, why is that? It looked, it looked to us that the landlords or the realtors, or I don't know who, had a chokehold on the market, and obviously, that is not good because housing prices of this old housing stock kept rising, but we did not get new housing. The city leaders are very pro-growth, and when this issue came up, they were the catalyst and pushed for numerous housing developments. And currently, there are 10 housing developments, either in the pipeline or recently finished. And these are not 10 homes. Some of these housing developments have dozens of units. And I have to say, for a city of 21,000, this has to be a record nationwide. Let's look at local business sentiment. In 2019, the number of local businesses, small businesses increased 1.7% in the metropolitan area, but 3.4% in Pittsburgh, which is amazing. Now, if you, the chamber also did a survey and found out that local businesses, 68.3% of local businesses plan to expand in the near future. 36.7% said they would stay the same, not one said they would lay off. If you look at commercial building permits, that they are up 95% in 2020. So, there's definitely a lot of confidence by local business people in the local economy. Now, let's look at local incomes, household finance, and retail sales. What stands out over here is the extremely low per capita income locally. Now, we know why, at least partly, because most of the high-paying jobs in Pittsburgh are filled by commuters that export the wealth out of Pittsburgh to all the communities. 40% of, 42% of that goes to communities outside Crawford County. However, the per capita income has been growing by leaps and bounds, much faster than other places nationwide. And no surprise that have benefited local households, you can see that 9.5% of households in the Pittsburgh metropolitan area, actually in the city of Pittsburgh, were pushed up into the middle-income bracket in the 2010-2019 period, and 8.5% in the metropolitan area. Now, that is seven times more than statewide and three times more than nationwide. Not surprisingly, this good household finance situation affects local credit ratings, and according to Equifax, then 72.3% of all adults in the Pittsburgh metropolitan area have a prime credit score. And that is the highest level in the recorded history of this indicator. Not surprisingly, also, having all this good household finance situation, the bankruptcies go up and down. However, what is important are per capita bankruptcies, and you can see there are only half in the Pittsburgh area that are the nation and the state. Now, let's talk about real estate. In 2019, home sales increased 19% in the Pittsburgh area, and median home prices went up 29%. I mean, that has to be a record nationwide. I don't know about any other city with this performance. And if you look at the amount of investment that's been taking place, obviously, we have to invest today and build factories to produce more next year and increase the standard of living, and there's been almost half a billion invested in the last half years during the 2014-2019 period. And that also has to be a record for a city with 21,000. I mean, that is amazing. So, the level of economic development and economic activity in the background is just phenomenal. Not surprisingly, all this good economic performance is affecting commercial land prices locally, according to Jones Heritage Realtors. Then, median prices of commercial land increased from 5.7 in 2015 to 7 in 2019. Now, I am using this period a lot because somewhere in 2014, 15, and 16, most of the local economic indicators started to look up. And we've been growing, growing very healthy since then. Now, I want to talk briefly about the lodging industry, because every dime that comes in in revenues is a fresh injection of resources into the local economy. And in the period of 2015-2019, revenues increased 54%, and that has to be a record also. Name me a city nationwide that had this phenomenal growth. It is a shame. I think a lot of people don't know about what's going on here in the background. You don't read about it on the news. You don't see it in the newspaper. Now, what has Pittsburgh to offer? We have plenty amenities. Lot of studies in the economic literature have found that people that are high-skilled and educated, they want to move out of big cities to smaller cities in rural setting, and have urban amenities, and we have a lot of them, and natural amenities, including revitalized downtown with over 40 specialty stores and bars, which is very important because when a prospective employer goes to a city, the first thing they do is go downtown, and if it is dilapidated or dead, they run for the hills. Now, the city leadership is aware about that, and like I said, they are very pro-growth. And so, they've been the catalyst and pushed for all these revitalization programs downtown. We have 29 revitalization programs downtown, either in the pipeline or recently completed, and that is amazing for a city with 21,000. And that has to be a record too. I don't know about any other city. Now, the U.S. News and World Report in 2019 did a study and compared us to 835 similar cities or communities, and they found out that we have much higher quality of life than the average. We have 36.1% greater access to hospital beds per capita. We have higher spending on students in the high schools, higher high school graduation rate, less violent crimes, greater job diversity, that has to be the college, and 3.3% better access per, I mean, per capita access to the internet, which is important because the Federal Reserve states that cities that don't have good access to the internet are not able to grow. The city is also a consumer city, according to Department of Revenue here in Kansas. If all retail sales were consumed by locals, the city would have to have, have to have 86% bigger population. So, there's plenty, many of retail and services. Now, one of the strengths, pro-growth leaderships. If you look to the future, strong economic development and partnership between the chamber and the city, and of course, the neighboring cities. Now, the major weakness are the public schools. The high school was rated 2 out of 10 last year, and this year is rated 4 out of 10. Now, I would not trust a company rated 2 out of 10 or 4 out of 10 to fix the roof of my house, let alone raising my kids. It might not be enough to have all this increase in quality of life and improvement in household finance and so forth. Because if someone gets a job in Pittsburgh and has a family, they might decide to locate in a community like Cal-Johnson with higher rating of the public schools because we all love our kids and we want them to graduate from a good high school and go to a good college. We can't blame them. Of course, we had a negative population growth for a while, but because of all this economic development that we had in the background, it's been improving every year. And in 2019, it was actually positive. Now, this is the problem in a nutshell. Since 2011, we had 4.8% job growth, and the labor force increased, I mean, declined 2.1%. Now, most of the wealth, a big chunk of the wealth, that was created by these jobs, has been exported out of the city. And that's a lot of property taxes and so forth. So, I just want to say, I think the city is on a great foundation in the area, and I believe it was on the cusp of taking off at the end of 2019, early 2020. Then we had COVID, and I just hope that we are gonna land on our feet. Now, I went through this really fast because I only had 15 minutes. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Yeah, I got one. I've talked to, before COVID hit, and maybe since it's hit, I've talked to several businesses in town, small to large businesses, and their one common denominator is, they all had jobs. They always hiring. They couldn't get people to work. They couldn't get people to work. Maybe, maybe that's why some of these people are commuting because we don't have a job force that wants to work. Maybe they are coming from other communities to fill our local jobs. I just wonder if you've run into that situation with our local businesses and the struggles they have to find employees.
Well, I, I, you know, according to this, then most of the problem is the housing. Now, thirty-six, thirty-six percent said that they are... Thirty-six percent said that they want to live in rural setting. So that was a choice, but the majority wants to live here and work here.
Yeah, well, you know, that, that can be debated. I, I don't know if that's why they're not living here. But like I said, a lot of people was hiring. This didn't have the workforce. Maybe that explains some of the, some of the computer commuting issues that we don't have a workforce that wants to work in Pittsburgh.
One of the, one of the studies that, that Michael referenced, Commissioner, was a skills gap survey that we conducted just a couple of months ago. And that's what we're trying to get to is we, we feel like there, there's a bit of a disconnect between some of the workforce that we have. They don't have the skills to, to meet the jobs that are available right now. So we're, we're trying to, as a community, do a better job of matching up the workforce that we've got with the businesses that have the jobs available and make sure that they've got the skills to fill those jobs.
That's good because, you know, I know a lot of people go to college and they get good jobs. But my sons did too. But when they got them jobs, even though they had a college education, the company they worked for educated them on how they want them to work. And I, I'm glad you're talking about that because that, that is a complaint that I've heard several times. We have a lot of businesses hiring and no one to fill them jobs.
And of course, hard skills are one thing. There's also the soft skills that it's harder to teach those. I think a lot of our businesses will tell you that they can teach people how to do what they need them to do. But we, we still have a ways to go in terms of turning out a workforce that shows up on time, is, is dependable. So we're trying to work on both of those fronts.
It's a different world. I understand that.
Yes, sir.
Well, another thing to complement that is when I first got here, the thing I heard was the other side of the coin was there's not enough, there's, there's not a high, high enough wage to get me to, you know, take my job serious and, and get the soft skills I need. And so I think it's pretty telling in, in this, the, the businesses have stepped up and they are increasing wages. So there are better jobs out there that, that can, you know, a lot of people may not feel that they can raise a family on a, you know, pizza delivery. That's not the job we're trying to create. We love all the pizza places, but we're trying to create these manufacturing jobs too because those are the ones where you don't necessarily need the four-year degree. But you can get the manufacturing skills at C-Tech, and so that's where C-Tech came from. So it's a big puzzle piece. It's coming together. There's definitely people that, you know, aren't ready to commit to a forty-hour a week. I've got to go to bed at ten or eleven so I can get up at six or seven and, and do it. But I think the part of that is, is the wages. And that's why we've always really tried to press Michael to, to honestly give us a, a real clear view of where are we with the wages? Because I think if we've always got the lowest wages, we're going to attract the lower end of the workers. And we're starting to turn that around. I think that's, that's helping also.
You've gone through this, this presentation in your fifteen minutes, a lot of time. Do we have access to this information?
Oh, absolutely. I will leave the slideshow. And I don't know, I mean, you can put it online or, I mean, and any information you need, you can just call me. I, I would like to comment on what Darren said. And that is, we did a survey two years ago, labor force survey, and found out thirty percent of the local businesses thought wages were important and hiring people. Everyone almost said the most important thing was benefits.
Right. Yeah. Security for their family, affordable health, pension. So wages are part of it, but there's a big package there. And quality of life is another big one. But...
Dr. Davidson, could you explain a little between the measurement of the, what constitutes the metropolitan area versus the Pittsburgh?
Say it again.
So you have data that is Pittsburgh-specific, and then you have data that's the metropolitan area? What, what is, what, what's the difference?
The metropolitan area is the county, but it's defined by the census as being upcoming metropolitan area in the long run. So they have decided that, that Pittsburgh is going to have a big role in the region in the future. So that's why, you know, we talk about metropolitan area, but it's really the county. But the, the city, of course, has the most of the jobs and most of the population and so forth.
You know, we, we all talking about this education. I've been out to C-Tech several times in the last couple of weeks. It's amazing to see the number of young people out there learning these new skills for them. Certainly going to qualify them to fill some of these positions that are necessary.
Yeah, how would, how would you, I'm sorry, what are you doing?
I was going to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Well, I guess more of a statement, sorry. So we have, we have job need. We don't have a significant growth in population, although we do have, you know, a small part. And, and what we've, and I want, just want you to confirm or deny, I guess, over the last six years, we've consistently heard that housing is a barrier to that population growth.
Absolutely. And, and that's why we have all this commute. But also, I think, the number one economic development concern now are the public schools.
So, and I know, you know, our next agenda item includes the district, and they may want to respond to that, but anyway, yeah, go ahead.
No, I was just going to speak on, on the housing portion. And the, you know, our, our housing trend is up, obviously, new construction. Currently, in two thousand twenty, a year where building materials are at an all-time high, where I know specifically a lot of homes that people were going to build, that they pushed off. But even with that, we still have twenty-two single-family homes, building permits for two thousand twenty. And that just continues to increase. I, I know we're going to have more at the end of the year because I've already spoke with these people. And I have a pretty significant list here of the, the housing developments. And Dr. Davidson alluded to, to them in his presentation. I have a little bit more of a specific list on, on data, if I could share that with you guys. No, obviously not going to read this, but I can get that to you guys.
Sure.
As, as far as housing goes with this report, are there any questions that you have about our current housing situation?
I think we're rocking and rolling.
We are, we are rolling for sure.
Cheryl, did you have something?
Yes, I did. Where do you draw from your survey? I mean, you're talking about surveying.
Say it again.
For your surveys, for your, your data?
Yeah.
Who do you draw from?
Well, we, we sent it out to all the major employers, and we got five hundred and thirty responses. That's what it was based on.
All the metropolitan?
Uh, the city. This was for the city.
Okay. Is it a specific demographic or is it everything from the lowest end to the middle class to the upper? Because I've never seen anything like that before. And I just wondered where you draw, where you draw from your information from? If you're doing a survey, wouldn't you survey all of, all of the city instead of a, a certain amount?
He's talking about businesses.
Right.
Yeah, so you've never received a survey?
No. And so that's why I'm just saying.
So, so it was, it was in cooperation with the chamber, and they sent it out to all the...
Okay, so is it, does it just fall on chamber members or is it everybody in general?
Which, which survey are you referring to?
Just, you know...
So the one, the commuter study, and it's been three or four years ago. We would have sent that out to everybody that had a business license with the city.
Really?
And of course, sometimes, you know, things get hung up in, in spam filters. But we will, we will make sure that in the future you do or if there's a technology glitch that, that we resolve it. But we, we try to target every single business. And actually, that commuter study went out to everybody that had a, a business license with the city of Pittsburgh. Sometimes we will expand it out to the county, the metropolitan area, if that's the, the area that Michael's looking at.
Yeah.
But no, we don't limit it to chamber.
Well, as far as the schools, you're talking also, I thought Pittsburgh schools were top-notch. So you're saying that they're better in Missouri than they are here? Is that what you were saying? Or was I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, yeah. They're edging up.
It's a good segue to the next one.
Because that...
So Brad, can you introduce yourself just in case?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Brad Hanson, Assistant Superintendent for the District. And, and it's interesting that right before COVID hit, we had an IP twenty thirty meeting where we addressed this issue specifically. So when you go on a Realtor website, you see a survey...
Can you talk into that mic because I'm going to make sure everybody hears?
You see a survey tool called GreatSchools.com. And basically, what that does is it takes state test scores and it ranks schools, gives them a rating of, you know, one through ten. And as Dr. Davidson showed, our schools oftentimes score very low. But what you'll find nationwide is urban areas or, or emerging urban areas that have higher poverty typically score lower. It's, it's really biased towards areas that have more wealth, less poverty, and less ethnicity. And that's not Pittsburgh. We have our fair share of poverty, and we have our fair share of ethnicity. And therefore, those rankings are very, very biased against us. But what I shared with the community in that IP twenty thirty, we actually took our test scores in the state of Kansas and compared to districts throughout the state, including the Johnson County elite, is what I would say, the Blue Valleys, Shawnee Mission and those. And when you compare our poverty kids against their poverty kids, we do really, really well. When you take our non-poverty kids against their non-poverty kids, we do very, very well. But when you mix them all together, we don't fare so well. Why is that? Because we have more kids that are living in poverty or more kids from ethnic backgrounds, so on and so forth. So Great School is not going to go away unless test scores go away. So what we've got to do as a city is we've got to promote what we do well. We were just starting in that process. COVID hit, and it kind of went to a standstill. So I want to engage the Realtors so that when they go to those sites and then they're, they're looking at Jones Realty or, you know, any of the other Realtors in town, that they're getting the true story of what we have. Because Cheryl, you're right, we have Great Schools. And we're as good or better than Carl Junction and Webb City. But we have to tell our story because that story is not going to ever be very favorable for us. Okay?
The other thing, the other thing, the other thing that, one of the things when you start digging through some of these numbers, all right, and looking at them closely, because it is of concern to us and we've looked at it hard and we've talked a lot about it, is, is the, one of the things that we've pointed out is the progression through the grades is pretty, pretty exceptional in, in USD two fifty. Could you talk about the progression through, from grade to grade?
Yeah, well, the way we measure things is we look at a cohort of kids. And so we, it's not necessarily comparing third graders to third graders each year because they're all different. So we like to compare, what does a third grader look like to the, with the next year when they become fourth graders? And what do they look like the next year when they become fifth graders? What type of growth? And so that's how we compare. They don't do that in great school, grade schools. They just take third grade scores versus third grade scores each year. We look at it in terms of, you know, how does a, a, a group grow from year to year to year? And once again, we compare very, very favorably. So we have to tell that story. We have to show, and the, the statistics that I showed that night, I think people were amazed that, you know, our, for instance, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we can show over the last couple of years, our non-free-introduced kids in math and English ranked as high or better than Blue Valley's kids. We got to tell that story because that's pretty impressive.
Brad, I just want to thank you for getting up here. Maybe there's somebody out here watching this tonight, and they might be wanting to come to Pittsburgh. And we hear that we don't have good schools. Thank you very much for coming up and defending our schools. And what you said, I think they're going to come to Pittsburgh and put their kids in our schools.
Well, like I said, it's got to be a community effort. And we're going to, the next item is, is going to be a big plus because we can put that out there when we talk about, you know, offering for our kids that don't have the opportunities that they do. I think that's a big feather in our cap for our community, so.
You know, the only issue I see is that we're in competition with these other communities. And they have, they have a score and we have a score. A lot of consumers are not going to go any further than look at that score. How do we address getting that changed? Are we dealing with Zulu or are we going up or, you know? I mean, that's where the issue is.
But businesses are trying to recruit people. And so then, you know, then they look at Zulu and stuff. So really, our avenue is to educate our business community. So when they're recruiting somebody, they can say, you know, this says this, but this is the reality.
You, if you, if you talk to some people nationwide, they believe that it is, it's a purposeful thing that people are trying to drive people away from the urban areas. And they're doing it because those test scores... Well, I, I'll give you a good example. In the whole state of Kansas, over the last five years, if you're, if you're a student that, that qualifies for free-introduce line, so if you're below, you know, you're around that poverty line, you're going to, on average, score twenty percent lower than a student that does not qualify for that. And so that's statewide, not just Pittsburgh, that's statewide over the last five years, that average. And so once again, Patrick, it, it really boils down to, I don't know that we can play that game, the, the game of Great Schools. We have to own it, but we also have to clarify it and explain it. And the only way that we can do that is with, with really good information on our chamber websites, on our Realtor websites. When people are searching for things in Pittsburgh, we have to give them kind of the Paul Harvey, now you know the rest of the story. Okay, you're getting this, but here's what, how we're clarifying this and showing really good hard data.
Any other questions for Dr. Davidson?
I do. Dr. Davidson, where does the taxes, because we're a border city, compared to Kansas and Missouri, where does the taxes factor in as far as property taxes? When you were showing the difference between the houses there? Because you're definitely going to be cheaper in Missouri than you are in Pittsburgh.
Well, value is what matters. And, and a lot of people, they do not want to commute, but they commute because they were not able to find a good house here. I don't think it's the property taxes because in the study, there were some people that said that, but the majority had other issues.
So that was low down?
I, I really haven't studied that a whole lot. But I know a lot of cities. I used to live in Oklahoma. Oklahoma City increased their property taxes quite a bit, but developed the downtown. And they absolutely grew and became very successful. And in Tulsa, where I live, we have low property taxes, and they just left us behind. That happened when I went to the Chamber of Commerce.
Well, I think the commuter study that was, somebody said it was four years old. That was really the purpose for the commuter study was a, a study of taxes and the cost of living in a community versus another one to see if we had an issue. And what it came down to was the actual cost of commuting is so much greater than what you're paying the difference in property taxes.
And then the last issue too, yeah.
That it, it's one of those points that you could argue with any individual based on where they are because there are people I know, my wife's a Realtor, she said, oh, so-and-so couldn't get their brain around the country living in this part of the state versus the property taxes in, in a city like Pittsburgh. But I think the study took all of that and put it out there. And it clearly showed it was much greater cost to, to commute than it was to pay the difference in property taxes.
That study also dealt with the fact of the value of your time that spent on the road and away from your family. It, it showed what that was worth to these commuters.
But it's a good ques, I mean, there's, there's a lot of moving parts. Thanks a bunch.
Thank you.
Great job. Fifteen minutes, huh?
It's okay, it's important business, important information. All right.
All right, moving on to the next special presentation, item B, broadband expansion project update. Deputy City Manager Jay Byers will provide an update on the partnership with, between the city, USD 250 and Motorola to expand broadband to serve families in the USD 250 service area.
Mayor Commissioners, I'm glad we're having this opportunity to have, talk about the important issues of primary and secondary education. I do want to say that the value of your school district is how far they progress students when they have them. And our school district does that on a regular basis. And one of the ways they can do that is to provide internet access to their students as well. Now, Kansas, the state of Kansas is making broadband access for everyone a priority. And the state's currently using some of the coronavirus relief funds to, to make learning available to all students so that, so that no one would be at a disadvantage during the pandemic and even beyond. So Dr. Hanson approached me about a program about potentially using some city facilities for a pilot program that was intended to bring broadband to students in Pittsburgh. And the pilot program was so well received by the state that they wanted to expand it. And I think it's a really interesting and exciting story to tell. And I'd like, like him to tell it though, because the, the, the grant is coming to the, to the school district.
So just, Dr. Hanson's here, Superintendent Rich Profit's here, and Board Chair Mickey Painter's here, so.
Yeah, absolutely. So all of us would be able to answer questions. Before I get into that, I gotta, I gotta hammer home on the last thing. So if you write this down, go to dragonexcellence.org. So if you get some spare time, that's a site that we've created. It kind of explains our dragon way and some of the behaviors that we're trying to instill in our kids. But if you click up on the menu and click ratings, exactly what we just talked about with those ratings with great schools, that's what we're trying, that's our first attempt at trying to, to sell that. But that's on our website. We got to get that out on places where people are going to go searching when they're looking to find a new home in Pittsburgh. So look at that and then give us feedback in terms of, is it good? Is there things that need to be added? And then where does this need to land along the way? Okay, so the broadband project. Jay and I had conversations about the need in our community for kids that don't have, they either don't have internet service or they have very poor quality. When I say by poor quality, they're probably sharing minutes and they're probably sharing a limited data plan. So their parents have a data plan on their phone. But that's, you know, they might have 10 gig or something like that and they're sharing that and, and they just don't have enough to be able to get through a month. We surveyed our parents when we went in, when we had to shut school down and go remote last March. So in April or May, we surveyed our parents and, and said, tell us a little bit about your experience. And what we found is about 20 to 25% of our student population indicated that they did not have good quality internet service. So we knew that was an issue. So we started having conversations with some of our local providers. The thing is there, they've got to make, they've got to make ends meet, you know? And so they can't just give internet service away. You see some things out there, I know T-Mobile's got a plan right now that, where they're, they're trying to give internet at a very, very low cost, but it's limited to the number of minutes. And it's, you know, there's just a lot of restrictions. And so Jay and I started having conversations about what would that look like if the city were able, you know, city and school district were able to work together to be able to provide that. What I found was that you guys, the, the city has worked over the last several years to create this fiber hub in the community that really makes it available. I mean, this project would cost a heck of a lot more if you guys, as, as the city leaders, had not thought ahead and started to create some of the infrastructure that you have in place, especially with fiber. So we initially, Jay and I put in a bid for Spark One funds and they had a line, the county had a line in there for collaborative projects, so we thought that fit really, really well. And they awarded us $100,000. And so we began to start having conversations with Motorola. What could we get for $100,000? Within a couple of weeks, Spark Two came out, COVID relief money, and it was earmarked specifically for broadband access for kids. So we put in, we actually, we were pretty ambitious. We put in a $2.5 million ask out of a $10 million pot. We probably knew we weren't going to get 2.5 million, but we go, you know, might as well go high and see what you get. We actually got $160,000 initially. So that took us to a little over quarter million. We were pretty excited with that. Again, we engaged with Motorola and said, what can we get for that? In the last two weeks, we have been informed from the Department of Commerce that they upped their $160,000 offer to a million dollars. So we now have 1.1 million to become, to make this a reality. So what's 1.1 million going to get us? It will give us the ability to have six 360-degree array antenna. I guess that's the best word, they're called CBSDs, that will be positioned within the city. That's what we need the city for, is we need your, you have the tallest places. You have the water towers, you have Memorial Auditorium, you've got the central radio tower. We need height to be able to broadcast out to the city. And then we'll, we'll have 500 end-user devices that we can give to students for free. And their internet service at home will run through, because of your fiber, it will run through your fiber back to the USD 250 and it runs underneath our firewall. So the safety is much, much better. Kids aren't going to be able to get to places that they shouldn't be going. And we can control what devices go on that network. So it's not like we're providing free internet for households. Because I'm a big believer in the Crocan and Cox, they've got to make a living and they've got to do well. So if families need that, they need to pay for it. But if they can't pay for it and they've got kids in school, we've got an option for the education for those kids at school. So we've got this 1.1 million. The challenge is, is that we have to have it up and running by December 30th. What'd you say, Jeff? We have 30?
31 days.
31, 31 business days to be able to make it a reality. So Jay, I'm sure he's going to talk to you about some things that hopefully the city will, will buy into. School districts working on, on making this a reality. We put out the application today at 1:30 and already in the first three or four hours, we already had 25 applicants. I think we'll, we'll have well over 500 applicants for this. And so, once again, tell your story. There's nobody in our area that has that to offer. And so if we tell that story, this is how our community is working for the betterment of kids. I think it's a, it's a win-win for all of us. So Jay, anything else?
No.
Brad, I have a quick question. Why Motorola?
Good question. Name recognition, in my mind, I know Jay and Jeff sought out, I'm sure they sought, sought out several companies, but Motorola seemed to be the one. They're working in the space of LTE cellular network transmission. And you can explain, you know, you know that better. But that's, that's the area that, you know, they're working with several cities. They've mentioned San Antonio and, and some communities in California where they're making this a reality. And so it just seemed like a really good fit. And I think their name recognition, you know, is, is pretty extraordinary, so.
They're, they're also working off the state contract, so we're, we don't have to bid their work.
Brad, how do you, you talked about that's internet service for households and for the kids. How do you monitor that service is not being used for, other than the kids' education?
Good, good question, Chuck. So once again, we'll have, on the back end of this, we will have the ability to monitor, along with Motorola monitoring the system. And so, you know, we'll have upfront controls on the devices that we send home, that they only recognize certain IP addresses or, or certain devices. And then we'll be able to monitor those types of things. But if it's coming back through our system, we already have the firewall in place. And so I'm not going to say that kids can't get, I mean, there's, there's always ways around, but they have to work a heck of a lot harder when they're in school to get the sites that they shouldn't be getting to.
Yes. Absolutely. Sorry. This, this is always a good question and I, I want our parents, Rich Profit Superintendent Schools, by the way. I always want our parents to feel safe about what we're doing. And so when, when it gets to us, it goes through a fiber network called CANRIN that, that we are able to get. And CANRIN has a great team that is constantly monitoring it. And as a matter of fact, CANRIN will catch some things before it can actually alert us on some of our systems. And they can say, do you see that this is going? But we also have some third parties that will also help us out. And it monitors it off-site. So it's not only the firewall, but it goes through our filter. It's being monitored not only by our tech team, by Motorola, by CANRIN, but also a third party. So it, it's kind of a quadrilateral type of thing in which we are really trying to take care of that. And so we would like to think that everybody that's going to be able to get on this network should feel very secure that our kids are going to be safe and, and only getting into the areas that they need to.
Very good.
Okay.
Brad, you talk about these 500 units. If you run out of those, can people with their own devices sign up with you?
No. So, so currently, this will just be for our devices. And the, 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 the devices that, that link to the network are pretty expensive, obviously with the amount of money that we have at this point. So if we run out, then, you know, we've got to make a budgetary decision of, do we provide more? Or do we seek additional grant funding for more? You know, it's our hope that, you know, we show a really good proof of concept because this is a relatively new idea. And there's potential of people saying, this is a really great idea and maybe having, you know, additional funding. Because our original $2.5 million ask was for 1,000 devices and up to 10 to 12 towers within the city.
Brad, how are you going to measure success? What, in May, what will success look like to you?
Well, number one is if every student that wants, that does not have quality access to the internet, if we've been able to provide that for them, and then hopefully that engages them more in the learning environment. So, you know, I, I spoke to the Joppa Globe today and I use the term, success is us leveling the playing field. We allow all students to have the same opportunity. Then ultimately, if kids are succeeding in the classroom, then that's, that's how you truly measure success.
So 31 days is doable. Or are you under the gun at 31 days?
That's what Jeff says, that's what Motorola says.
No, I mean. Let's get the part B of this presentation.
Okay, Larry, did you have something?
Oh, sorry.
Did you have, Brad, you have some way to monitor, say, the student does well on everything except math? Can you see to it, is there some way to monitor that they're getting more math or more English?
Well, that's up for us to, that's in the classroom, that's in the classroom where we, where we check that. This is really more about access. When you, you read a lot about the digital divide in our country. And that's why there's, all this money's being thrown out to the states to, to enhance broadband. It's because there is that divide. The, the lower income, they just, they don't have the opportunities that kids of means have. And so that's what we're trying to do is bridge that gap for the clientele that we have that don't have the opportunities. So we provide that for them and then we just do our very best to educate them the best that we can and, and hope that they take advantage of it.
I think we would all be surprised, the number of kids that go to the library to access internet. And this will help to, you know, provide that ability in their own home to do their homework and things like that.
Well, they, they can't do that now though, can they? Because the library's closed.
Right, that's been a huge barrier.
You know, and this is not just a COVID thing.
Right.
This is, this is well beyond COVID. You know, the other thing that I like about our plan is it's sustainable, it's moving forward. You know, there are a lot of people access the grant to purchase, they just purchase the internet service. So let's say you, you go to Crocan or Cox and you purchase a year's worth of internet service. You could do that and provide it to families. But what happens after that year? It's done. We have the infrastructure to be able to make this permanent and, and make it move forward. So we're excited about it.
The other piece we haven't really talked about is, you know, we have school nurses and school behavioral health specialists. And that, this telehealth is also a piece of this that, that could use those devices to reach a kid at, at home.
Yeah, and I hope Jay will talk, this has got to be a win-win for, for the school district and the city. So I think there's some inherent value of having this network up and running for the city as well for things outside of education, so.
Jay?
Which is my segue to talk about a little bit. Um, thanks.
Thanks, Brad.
Obviously, the, the, the concept, the basic, basic reason why we're doing this is to get broadband to students, right? Which, which of course in and of itself is great. But you understand the caveat that he says, we have till the end of the year, 31 working days. That creates some serious pressure on us to be able to get the infrastructure in place. Our, the longest timeframes to do a system like this is the boring, the laying the fiber in the ground and getting the tow, you know, towers set up. And that's the long, and that falls on the city to do that. The city has agreed to do that infrastructure and to maintain it going forward, right? So what we're, what we're looking at, let's see. The, we, we have, we have the tower locations and the fiber nearby, but to be able to make the actual connections, we're going to have to move very fast here. So one of the things, one of the reasons we're having this is not just to tell you about the project, but we are, we are faced with having to make some hard decisions. We're going to put up two, we have two tower locations, two new tower locations that, that are going to be necessary to meet the requirement that Brad has. Brad's commitment to the 1.1 million dollar ask is to serve 500 families, all right? To be able to do that, we have to have a couple more towers. To get a couple more towers, we have to go through plans and zoning. We have to go through, you know, we have to find the towers, by the way, which is not easy to do in a short timeframe, right? Jeff's still working on that. But it's a, but, so all of this stuff is, is going to be pushing the edge of what we can accomplish through our traditional processes, right? For example, right, we, we, there are, we, we try to get 20 days notice before we go to plans and zoning. We found out what we needed to, soon enough that we could only get 19 days notice, all right? We have the, we have it on the agenda, we've sent out the, the notices to the property owners. We've done everything we need to, but it's only 19 days and not 20 days in advance. So that's one of the things that we're, we're looking at a process step that we weren't able to 100% meet, right?
So is that just for one, one tower?
It's, we're going to put up, we're going to put up two towers.
I know, we're putting up two, but, but both those towers, planning and zoning is impacted.
Yeah, they'll be on the agenda together.
Okay.
Jay, there was a tower on 250 property up there, the middle school. Why, is that some area they could put the tower back?
Yeah, we, we really went through and looked at a bunch of different potential sites. The, the tower there is, it's not strong enough really. I mean, that was what our, that was what the conclusion was. That particular tower was not.
Were you talking about the one at the middle school?
Yeah.
It used to be there?
Do what? Yeah, it used to be there.
Yeah, no, it's, it's long, it's, it's not even.
Why, why, why did it go?
That's, that's pre our tenure.
Yes, it was, I don't know, I'm not sure. So we've looked at a bunch of different locations. We're using the two water towers, all right? We're, we're using Memorial Auditorium, putting up a tower on Memorial Auditorium. It just happens to be in the area where we would like to reach a lot of the students. And we're also using a Lakeside Elementary, all right? And then, then we're going to put up two new towers, one in Schlinger Park and one at, next to Fire Station Number One.
So what, if there are property, and this is just my ignorance, why, why is planning and zoning?
It affects, it affects the surrounding property owners, right? And so we, our process is even if it's on city property, we have to let the, the surrounding property owners know. And we've already sent out the letters to the surrounding property owners.
What's the height of these towers?
Well, depends on how high, we're going to do a minimum 80 feet, all right? And we want to, it depends on how quickly we can get the towers.
What does it affect as far as the, the people surrounding it? What's the effect?
Well, it's, it's, it's an impact that we, we see an impact on, anything that has an impact on the, the, any property.
Like the aesthetics or?
Yeah, like.
There's someone.
It's not 200 foot.
Go ahead.
For any tower that's going to be over 50 foot tall has to have a conditional use. And that's why we have to go through the hearing at the Planning Commission order to do that. So that's the biggest driver there is if, if it could be underneath that 50 foot, we'd keep going so it wouldn't. we'd keep, uh, going so it wouldn't need a conditional use. But in order to, since we need to have that height to be able to get the signal out, we have, need to have it and follow the same procedures we do for everything else. So the conditional use, we'll go to the, uh, planning commissioner on the twenty-third. They wanna take that recommendation to you the next night at the commission meeting on the twenty-fourth, the next meeting.
The, the other, the other piece, right, that we're here to get approval for tonight, so there's action that would need to be taken, is we need the, when we do all of the analysis of how much we, to be able to deliver to the five hundred students and to be able to, uh, direct, do all the infrastructure that we need to do, that's really the city's responsibility, that we will own, all right? And we will maintain going forward, we are a hundred thousand dollars short, all right? So we have, we are, we are asking for approval to spend a hundred thousand dollars to, uh, to complete this project. Um, now, that is, we, we feel that we can take those funds comfortably from our public safety funds and from our utility funds because in the long, because in the long run, the value to these, the value of this system that we're putting in place, the, we're putting in a million dollar system, uh, we've, we can, we're, the city's gonna own it and we're gonna be able to utilize it for those purposes. We can add cellular systems that are going to help us with a lot of the utility functions that we currently now are paying Verizon for. We think we can save conservatively around twenty thousand dollars a year just in, uh, in costs for our cellular services.
Jay, on these towers that we're gonna own, uh, is it something that we could sell, uh, antenna space to?
It is, it is.
Providers?
It, it is, they would, they would be, those particular locations would actually be pretty valuable, uh, uh, real estate for, for antennas.
Will, will this, uh, will the students' usage take up space on this line, uh, where it will inhibit our use?
They, they would be completely different lines, going through completely different, uh, sources. We can, we'll separate them through the fiber connections.
Right, cause the district control is going to control there.
We, yeah, the, the deal, the deal was, we'll put up the infrastructure, maintain it, but you're gonna have, they're gonna have to control and manage their own, uh, the system that's gonna be delivering the, the internet to the students.
What's the cost that we could charge, just to estimate?
Well, it's roughly five hundred dollars a month if, if for somebody, isn't that, that's about it?
Yeah, that's pretty fair for a tower that high for rental space.
So how many antennas could you put on it?
Well, we're putting six, uh, total per, so that's typical, two on all three sides of the train. It's a typical cell side tower.
And then if they could handle something, it didn't, we have to separate the antennas, it did, different sites.
So we can make money on these towers?
Well, in the long run, we, in the long run, we're definitely to the good on these towers, there's no question. But it'll, it'll take five years to recover that, that, that cost initially.
But it will be recoverable, which is good news.
Five years isn't long for a business investment to pay out.
So what's the timeline of getting these devices into kids' hands? What school year, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two?
No, this year.
This year.
This year. January, for sure, we, we will have the devices in hand mid-December. Of course, we shut down December eighteenth.
Right.
The grant.
Jay, people are gonna, people are gonna wanna hear what he said.
Hey, Brad, you need to come forward, sorry. And start over.
Yeah, so the, uh, you know, we're kinda in this time crunch and the, and the state, you know, waited until two weeks ago to give us, uh, the extra money. And so we've kinda been on a standstill on the ordering and things. So, you know, we're gonna get these devices in sec- maybe second week of December, but we shut down the eighteenth. And so if we're able, if we've got antennas up, we've got the student devices in, we'll start test driving, uh, in December. But we'll be full speed ahead in January.
So the other two towers that they're building?
Even if, even if those towers, I mean, we hope that those towers are up, but we'll have the infrastructure in place where we can put the other antennas up and start getting devices in kids' hands and get moving forward, so, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions for the team? So you're looking, uh, for us to approve a hundred thousand dollars toward this, uh, project? And you've identified those funds coming from public safety and utility.
That's correct.
So that's the motion, I guess.
Yes.
I'll move.
Make a motion to that effect.
Okay.
Second.
Moved by Larry, seconded by Cheryl. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Great, thank you, this is a, this is a great day.
Well, it's the school, it's the school district that's driving this.
Yep. Big thinkers. Um, the next special presentation, item C, Crawford County Recovery Task Force update. Deputy City Manager Jay Byers will provide an update on the Crawford County Recovery Task Force and their initiative to mitigate the spread of COVID-nineteen through the Crawford County United Campaign.
Yes, it's me again. Uh, the, uh, the, once the pandemic hit, of course, there's a lot of, a lot of concern in our community. Uh, Sean Accarado and I, I have, are switched off on the, being the chairman of the Joint City University Advisory Board. And, and we do a, uh, and we, he, we were talking about this. And we really felt that there was a need for some coordination, commu- and communication to help contain the pandemic and to keep our local economy open. Um, so we, we called around, we talked to a lot of different, different mem- people in the community who were likewise minded. And, and we, uh, we really, we created this, uh, crop, what we call the, what we've called the Crawford County Recovery Task Force. And, uh, that mem- that organization, that, that group grew to, to be thirty members representing eighteen different organizations in the healthcare, government, business, education areas, right? We've even created some subcommittees for public health, some for, uh, funding issues, one for economic employer relations and, and also for communication. So it's become a, an active body that's really considering all of the elements that are going on in this pandemic and trying to communicate to the community as well as to other, uh, all agencies, uh, about how, how best to address this, to make sure our economy stays going and open. Um, we were, uh, with the, the Crawford County Recovery Task Force was rec- was recognized, uh, by the county commission as a formal advisory body and has been providing some recommendations to, to the county commission as well. Um, that one of the main things that they're, that the Crawford County Recovery Task Force is doing is, is, uh, uh, they created what they call the Crawford County United Initiative. And, um, there's over sixty organizations and businesses that are involved in this. And, and what, what it, what it takes here is, is a, is a pledge. These are businesses that have agreed to take a pledge, uh, around three areas. They pledge, uh, touch to, uh, to attempt to enforce distancing in their, in their businesses, to, 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 to encourage ma- mask wearing as well as to, uh, maintain health and hygiene within their, within their business, uh, organization, within their business facilities.
Jay, can I stop you just one second?
Sure.
You keep telling us who is involved in this. Uh, you, you, I've never heard you use the, the word other cities.
No, it, there is, there, well, there are other cities.
Crawford County, but, but not.
Offer, it, oh, there are other cities, here's a, here's an example.
Well, if there are, that's just my question.
There are, city of Gerard, city of Gerard, city of Arma, Fort Knox involved, all, all of those cities.
Got it, thank you.
So, good question though. Yeah, we, but, um, but anyway, this is the pledge that the Crawford County United Initiative is, is asking the businesses to, uh, to take. And again, we've had sixty members, sixty people that have, that, uh, organizations and businesses that have taken it. We've got a website up, it's called CrawfordCountyUnited.com, all right? We certainly encourage, uh, businesses in the community to, to visit it. We're, we're talking about, uh, efforts that the entire community is making. We meet, the Crawford County Recovery Task Force meets every week. Uh, we talk about the state of, 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 of the economy, we talk about the state of the healthcare industry here locally and, and communicate amongst ourselves a- about what, what is the best, uh, what, what can we do to help, uh, contain the pandemic as well as to keep the bus- the businesses open? And we, we, uh, we hopefully are having an impact. That's, that's what, uh, we're wanting to make sure that, that we communicate as much as possible amongst ourselves and with the community.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
You say you have sixty businesses, uh, doing this. Is there any, uh, uh, decal or, uh, something that shows these businesses are participating in this?
We, that was just, uh, was it last week or?
I think so, yeah, last week.
Last week, they finally got their, got their decals back.
Okay.
And, uh, and their businesses can display them. So, so, and the purpose of that, of course, is that, uh, that, that patrons who are, who are, who are patronizing these businesses can know that these people have taken that pledge and that it's safe to do business in that, in that particular facility.
Okay, thank you.
And if they're not doing it, you can ask them why.
Yes, well.
Well.
Any, any, any other, if there are any questions about the Crawford County Recovery Task Force or the United?
All right, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to consider the following, A, disposition. Excuse me, glasses? Disposition, disposition of bids, WWTP site clearing and grubbing. Consider staff recommendation to award the bid for the site clearing and grubbing at the wa- wastewater treatment plant to RFB Construction Company, Inc. of Pittsburgh, Kansas, based on their total bid amount of thirty-eight thousand six hundred and ninety-five. Hello, Matt?
Good evening, mayor commissioners. Um, we did, we took bids, um, for the tree, tree clearing of, at the wa- wastewater treatment plant. Um, I kinda did a layout here, the site would be just north of the existing facility. I kinda did the overlay in there so you can see it, but we own that property through there. Um, property line sits in about fifty feet inside that tree line. And we are going to clear approximately seven point one acres through there. This is necessary to, uh, move forward on doing, uh, the geotech analysis from that site. That site was originally cleared, um, as a borrow site for some of the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant back in the sixties. So, uh, we just need to clear it again and confirm what's there and that's, that's our hopefully future, future landing spot.
Uh, it says here that, uh, RFB Construction is of Pittsburgh, Kansas?
Uh, they're a mile and a half outside, but they've got a mailing address of Pittsburgh.
Is this within, is this within budget or was this a?
Yeah, we had estimated around sixty thousand.
Okay. That's good.
How long does it take to complete this job?
Um, they think about around a month. They'll bring in a large horizontal grinder. Um, because of its proximity to town, we weren't able to push and burn. Um, we don't wanna smoke out, I mean, we're on the west side of town, it's probably not, not a favorable idea.
Kill that smell out there.
Someday.
Gosh dang it.
Not always us. Um, the, but, yeah, so they are going to, this will be a, they'll push and, and they will bring in a large, uh, horizontal grinder, um, similar to what they did at Silverback. They'll create the mulch pile, we're gonna have them leave it on site. And then our crews, our city crews will handle and distribute as needed, um, to reduce the cost of this operation. But the, the goal of this is right now too, besides that is we, we're living in the bat window, the bats are moved out, so we're gonna do that and throw some habitat down for some skinks and that kinda thing as well.
There's no other questions, I move approval.
That's seconded.
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Chuck. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Moving on to item B, Resolution twelve thirty-nine. Consider approval of Resolution twelve thirty-nine adopting and approving the proposed capital improvement program, CIP, for the years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. Hello?
Good evening, mayor commissioners. All right, tonight I would, uh, like to go over the city's five-year capital improvement plan. The city staff started working on this early this fall. And I wanna thank everyone's input and I feel like we have a great plan in front of us. So the capital improvement plan is a total, is a tool that we use to determine the city's needs concerning infrastructure. It allows us to identify projects that we, that we need and how we plan to fund those through the years. As you can see, the twenty twenty-one year is budgeted with our twenty twenty-one budget. However, the future years become unfunded. So you can see like the total was a hundred and seventy million. And that is so we'll need to figure out how to fund those projects as we move forward. Uh, but we need to identify those projects so we know what we have to do in the future. So we need to start planning and that's what, what this is, is a plan for our future. And as we know, there are always, plans are subject to change. So this could change tomorrow depending on what arises. Um, as for bonds, we do plan to go out for one in twenty twenty-two for the Quincy Street improvements from Joplin to Rouse. And in October, our Pittsburgh citizens voted to continue our street sales tax program, which allows us to do around two million in street improvements each year. We also have in our plan our recreation, uh, splash pad, which Kim brought to you for twenty twenty-one. That's an exciting project for our community. And I wanna mention that Kim, she always does a great job. And as you review the plan, you'll see that there's a lot of grants and donations that she's, um, going out and getting. So we applaud her for her efforts. Another big project that is coming up is our wastewater treatment plant, as Matt just talked about. And we're anticipating to get state revolving loan for financing on that. Again, I want to thank Kim, Chris, Cameron and Matt for all their work on this, as it was a team effort. Matt put a lot of time into going through and identifying those projects and getting estimates for us. And this plan would not be possible without them. Um, so I might be happy to answer any questions of, of the projects. And otherwise, I just need your approval for the plan. And if it's approved tonight, we will put it up on the city website.
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Pedestrian and bikeways. We have listed sidewalks on North Broadway from hotel area south to the TIF retail district. Have we come up with a way to cross the bypass?
No.
No, okay, that's a short answer, okay. Thank you.
None that are affordable. We've had several engineers take a swing at it, but.
Uh, South Georgia, where are we with that project? Uh, with those open?
Oh, the open niches, yeah, Matt's.
Uh, I met with, Pete's actually got that under contract and the one at JC's. Um, I met with, uh, one of his engineers, uh, here sixty days ago, finalizing details on that. Um, I should have a revised estimate budget and we're looking to be ready to go on both those projects right after the first of the year.
Correct.
So that will close in and, and we'll go into curb and gutter and modify that section between Jefferson and Martin and then replace the channel, um, up there, uh, behind JC's.
And I only have one other thing. And that is, I wanna, I don't believe we've ever had this, uh, where the money's coming from in this plan before. And I think that's really, uh, interesting and informative and I appreciate that.
I got a couple of questions, uh, this plan for twenty twenty-one, expanding train tower at number two fire station for a live burn, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. What, what does that entail? What does that look like?
Matt, you might as well stay up, unless you wanna get your steps in.
Um, we had, we had met with, um, Chief Simons and looking to do a lot of different, uh, opportunities at fire station number two. I mean, they've got some snow melt system, they've got the, uh, training tower, wanted to modify some of that. However, um, Chief Riley and I are going to meet later this week, in fact, probably tomorrow afternoon, to be more specific, um, to review those, those situation conditions and see what, um, his ideas and thoughts are about, what needs to be done there.
So then my next question for twenty twenty-two, uh, train tower, again, thirty-five thousand dollar modification. I guess you don't have an answer to that either or?
We're gonna mo- we're probably gonna modify and look at that, um, for some of the burn exercises that, that.
That leads me up to my third question. And in twenty twenty-four, we have, uh, bond funds for the replacement of the concrete pad around the training tower and the con- concrete approaches. Now, I retired in two thousand and twelve and back in two thousand and twelve, there was an issue with the concrete. I just wonder what, how do you determine that, uh, that can be put off to a twenty twenty-four, replacing that concrete?
That is, that is, uh, you know, that's, that's an ongoing conversation. We've tried to patch, um, and other needs that have come up, um, around some of the entire city with the, the capital and the general funds. The, uh, concrete as it stands right now, you know, the front approach is good, the approach coming off of twentieth. Uh, we've, obviously we had some waterline breaks in there to, to damage some of the approaches. Um, we've patched some of those, we continue to kinda supplement in some asphalt patches on those. Obviously they're, the loading that goes on those, on those pads right now, um, cause they're bringing the quinn over there. So it's got a lot harder load than was ever designed on those original concrete exterior slabs. The other challenge in that site and around the training tower, I mean, one, they're at end of life, cause they're twenty-plus years old. Um, is that part, they're still kinda holding together. That entire site has some drainage, um, issues that are kinda working around, so. So, yes, we've been nursing it, but it's, and then, you know, just working those together with the other needs around the city to try and get that worked in there.
Well, I can see that with the possible live training burns that you're going to have in the tower. And you said, the weight of the trucks, they're going to be, with the training tower modified for these live burns, there's going to be a lot more use of the training tower. And I think it was even talked about and discussed that we could use that also as a moneymaker. Have regional schools there in the future for live burns.
And I think that'll probably be some of our discussion with Chief Riley tomorrow about what does possibly.
There's going to be a lot more traffic on that as we use it for live burns. So, that was my concern. It's only going to get worse. And I understand we have a lot of projects that we have to look at. And I also understand that we can maybe jostle some of them around. If this doesn't hold up to twenty twenty-four, we could probably move it up.
Yeah, and we're working around some of that.
Sure.
To try and make some of that work. Can we talk to some contractors? And we've talked about some of the snow melt system, and we've actually had Pete engage another engineer, mechanical engineer, to look at the snow melt systems for both the front and back approaches, because those are electrical, snow melt systems, electrical wire, snow melt systems, and those are having issues. And so, there's a lot of aspects in and around what the needs are right now at fire station number two.
And as Larissa said, this is just guidelines, budget, the plan, so.
Well, and in fairness to the new chief, his first order of business after he, you know, finds the men's room and learns everybody's names, is to put together a strategic plan. And what you're talking about is, your question, I believe, is how does this fit in with competing initiatives? And where can we find the money? Obviously, the entire fire department is a general fund, property tax supported, so it competes with every other department that we have. It's not like the utility where we can just use water money to fix water problems. We do, we've been lucky to have the public safety sales tax. We earmarked all the expenses out of there, so we bought the new truck back in the day. He's already talked about the other truck. But we've asked him for working day for spring, when he gets with all of you. He'll provide his new strategic plan. It will include not only the operations with the capital improvements, and that will be, there's a big discussion about the overall fire training academy idea, and that is a significant part of it. So, while we probably don't have an answer today, he's already aware of it, and it will be coming. But it'll be part of a comprehensive plan for all of it. I'm going to put you on the spot, chief.
We'll see you in the spring. Expect great things. I do have a question. So, is a budget assumption of this that we will have increased revenue? I mean, because as I was kind of comparing it to last year.
Basically, it comes down to, it's a very simple process. After you do it year by year, you focus on the next year, which is going to be the budget, which is twenty twenty-one. Everything after that, just slides, priorities that you have to get to. Chuck's question about, I retired in twenty twelve and it's twenty twenty-four. Well, just so you know, anything in twenty twenty-four isn't in a very good place, because the only thing that's budgeted is twenty twenty-one. And twenty twenty-two is a pretty good guess, twenty twenty-three is a hope, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five are, we know about this project and it's got to be addressed at some point. But they do become priorities the more they fall into disrepair, but we don't know the speed that that's going to happen. So, we fund as well as we can. The one thing we count on, Jamie's made it a great practice, and I know Larissa's behind it, is the bond money, because the bond money is outside the tax plan. We pay that bond money with debt service, and so as we retire debt, we go ahead and just put something else back on there, and that's how things make it. But the operating budget, you know, I mean, I've been here nine years. I think we've raised property taxes once or twice, and those were usually for raises. We are counting on trying to grow this town. That's why we're talking about new houses and getting people to stay here, because that will build the property tax, and it will allow us to keep up with this maintenance. Because one thing about Pittsburgh that's great is we have three fire stations, and we have a really high ISO rating as a result. The other thing about that is we have to pay for three fire stations and all the concrete and everything that goes with it. So, it's always a challenge, but we always write up the revenues as high as we can, and you guys approve it in the budget, and that's what we live with. So, they do go up every year, but.
One of those things, too, you know, you got to think about is, some of the prioritization for the current bond funds is the East Quincy project, because we were selected for that project. So, we got to step up on that one, too. And so, that reprioritizes other things, unfortunately. I mean, that's how it works. But that is a pretty stellar example of whenever someone else kind of helps dictate our decision for what we go after.
Any other questions?
The current years, twenty-one and two, those are the needs right now, and the ones are further out, correct?
Yep. Yeah, you know, and it gives you a, you know, we get a lot of questions about, when are you going to do this? When are you going to do Georgia? When's that going to happen? You know, and those type of things. And, you know, the good thing about a document like this is, if you take the time to look at it, you can see a lot of things that, hey, we know it's out there, you know. Wait, I want it fixed as bad as the next guy. But, you know, this is how you start prioritizing. And every once in a while, you've got that pool of projects to kind of reshuffle and slide something back up in there, too. That, you know, if you don't have it listed somewhere, then you kind of forget about it, and it rolls on down. And then you're, two years later, like, what crap, you know, so. But, yeah, there's, you know, there's some pie in the sky, and there's some hopes and dreams, and, but there's some real stuff. And, you know, it's a good document for the public that, you know, hey, we know it's out there. But this is, you know, a pretty good guess of what, how big of a project it really is.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have just one.
Oh, sorry.
This is just housekeeping, maybe, but your pages thirty-seven and thirty-eight are the same. Is there an additional page that, you know, that's not on here? If you're going to put this out on the web.
There are.
So, is there an additional spending that's not here, or is it just a, just got printed again?
Thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Yeah, we'll have to put another page on there. There's another summary page.
Okay, so there is.
We'll put that out on the web if it's approved, yeah.
Thank you.
A summary page.
Summary of what?
Yeah, summary of what? Do you have it on your PowerPoint?
I don't know if it's on here or not. No, it's not on here. It's not. I can send that to you guys via email.
Was it just outlining more of the?
Yeah, it's just more of the narrative.
Okay.
It's not being critical by any means, I don't mean that. But if you can put it out there for the public, that would my question.
Yes.
It does exist. It's a summary narrative of the whole.
All right, any other questions? But entertain a motion to approve the capital improvement program for the years twenty twenty-one.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'm seconded.
Moved by Chuck, seconded by Larry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. This is still here. Non-agenda reports and requests, the bi-monthly budget review. Deputy Finance Director Larissa Bowman will provide the October thirty-first, twenty twenty, bi-monthly budget review.
Hello again. I'd like to go over the bi-monthly report as of ten thirty-one. We are ten months into this year, so we're at eighty-three point three-three percent of the year completed. We started the year out with fifteen point six million, and at the end of October, we are a little over eighteen million. And we did receive our last tax distribution from the county in October. So, we'll just kind of, we've got our revenues on that side, so we'll just have our regular expenditures to the end of the year. I did want to point out that in March, we had a lot of uncertainty of where we would end this year with. And as we get closer, we are still cautious with our assessments. However, we have stayed on course, and we have been hitting our revised budget numbers. So, we are going to end, I think, the year pretty healthy with all of our funds. They all look pretty good. And that, do you have any questions on the report?
Usually you have revenues from the casino. I don't see them on here.
No, but we did just get them today. We got twenty-six thousand, six hundred. So, it is up a little bit from last month. I think we were at twenty-three thousand. So, we, I do think we're going to hit that revised budget also.
Thanks.
And I did want to point out that sales tax is up two point nine eight percent compared to the same period last year, which is astonishing.
It is astonishing, you're right. All right, any other questions?
No, looks good.
Thank you.
Good job, Larissa.
All right, Darren, any other non-agenda reports?
Cameron is making his way up.
Just want to let the commission and the public know, we have already sent out a public notice on this. But on Thursday, from five to seven at Pitt Nazarene, we're going to have a public meeting. Folks can come in and see the plans for the East Quincy reconstruction. We've got a proposed plan together there, and folks can come in and kind of see what it's about.
Great, so that was Thursday?
Thursday from five to seven at Pitt Nazarene, yes.
We think it's in their activity center to the back?
Yes, we'll have some signs for it. There, I'll find out Thursday where exactly we'll be, and we'll get folks signed to it.
Great. That's exciting.
That's it from Stan? I have something.
Yes.
Larissa alluded to this about the questionable budget situation in March. And we did not budget for employees' two percent raise. And I, my way of thinking, we've skated through this, to this point in time, anyway, in good shape. And I think that we might rethink that, dropping the two percent raise and maybe putting that back on the schedule.
I think Darren was going to address that at the next meeting.
Oh, he was?
Or do you want to talk about?
He didn't tell me that.
Oh.
I'll do whatever, I mean, we definitely had a good year. It's not over, but we've had a strong performance. And this would have been a year, the upcoming year, twenty twenty-one, the budget we prepared in June would have been a year to include raises, and obviously, we took those out. So, nobody's more proud of the staff than I am. And unfortunately, the one guy that's tighter with the penny than me is leaving in twenty-six days. So. If you guys, I mean, I think we've got, I think we could definitely come up with, we can look at the budget and see what the cost. It's always comes down to cost. Once you put the raises out there, it's a permanent raise. But I think the staff's deserving of it, and if you guys are comfortable with it, we'd sure like to come back with a recommendation before the end of the year and just say what we think we could do. Probably, it'd probably be an across-the-board deal at a percentage. It wouldn't be the normal merit process where you get, you know, this based on performance. I think it's, you know, everybody's hung in there tight. And so, yeah, if you guys are comfortable with that, I'd be happy to present something in two weeks about a recommendation. And we'd probably shoot for, you know, putting it into effect in January, if that's what you want to do.
As far as I'm concerned, we should look at it.
I do, too.
Yep.
I'm looking.
That's a good idea.
Everybody's nodding their heads, okay. We'll have a recommendation for you at the next meeting.
I did, I have a question. Valela on Locust, building's fallen into the street. What, do we know anything about that?
Automobile accident.
Okay.
Yeah, I got hit by a car late one night, early one morning, and he came out on site. Randy was great, came out that night, met with the crews, and I think it was early morning.
Yeah.
And it'll be addressed, but, yeah.
And the other thing I'd just like to throw out there, and when, if there are any future bars that are being brought forward for extension of their, however that's worded, like your license or whatever, if any checks have done on their compliance with COVID precautions, I would like that included. And it may, that may not happen again. But I know that a couple Fridays ago, our law enforcement did some checks on the bars to see if they were following the health orders. And if bars are not compliant, I think that needs to be part of the report.
Makes sense to me.
Now that you mentioned that, Dawn also, and I don't know how you enforce this, but when you go down South Broadway on a Saturday night and you see fraternities with forty or fifty kids, it's not a bar, but they're drinking beer and having alcohol, and they don't have masks on. So, I think we need to kind of take a look at that also. We're going to target our businesses. And I understand they're concerned with masks. We should all be wearing masks. But just do it for everyone.
That'd be the county. I mean, yeah, I mean, we can, we got to get the county engaged in that, too. Because there's no point in us doing all of this if they're not going to hold.
You know, that's what Joplin's saying also. They, they're shying away from this mask ordinance and throwing it on the county. And if they can get the county, then they'll buy into it. But it's, it's, you know, they're looking for somebody else to back the bullet first.
Well, nobody's wanting to kick this down, the can down the road any further, but we may have a national change in January as well.
That's right.
More than likely will.
You think Donald will do that?
I think Dawn's going to do it.
I'm going to buy a mask for everybody.
Okay.
All right, anything else except?
I think we'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the school district's leadership on this grant. I can tell by the way all of you reacted to it that you felt the way we did, which is, you know, the kids are probably the most critical part of the community. And with everything going on, the fact that they can identify a million one, and we can get into it for basically a hundred thousand that's going to help us anyway. And I know they're putting some money into it, but it's a big deal. I appreciate all of you reacting and responding the way you did, because I think it says a lot about our community. We've got a great school district, we've got a lot of great school districts in our community. But Brad and Jay really put their heads together on this thing. And I just wanted to make sure, while we had it at our meeting, on our TV, with our commission, this was an idea that came from that school district, and we have a good partnership with them, and we're fortunate for partners like that. So, thanks to all of you for having an open mind and realizing that we may lose a day on the process here. But we're going to, we're going to be okay, and it's the right thing to do.
All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move?
Moved by Patrick, seconded by Larry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Great, thank you, everyone.